Well, hello and welcome to the Brian Hornback Podcast. This is episode thirty-eight. Thirty-eight. Uh, and this one's gonna be unlike any one you've heard before. Take a picture here real quick for those of you watching on YouTube right before I. That's not a scratch of my nose, but it's, um. Y'all tell me what that was, those of you on YouTube. Just got through watching the Knox County School Board meeting. Um. I'm probably more upset right now than I was when I actually served on the school board twenty-plus years ago. I was elected, uh, to the school board in the year of two thousand. I took the oath of office September first. Well, I started serving September first of two thousand and served until August thirty-first of two thousand and four. Let's talk about it. It was the MOA for the Knoxville Police Department, um, to have officers in the schools. Um, Mr. Watson, Daniel Watson, offered a substitute motion and he, he mentioned that he had talked to Gary Dupler. Mr. Dupler is a, uh, an attorney in the Knox County Law Department's office, uh, under David Book, the Knox County Law Director. And, uh, he talked to him about when he should propose the substitute. Well, actually, here's what's funny about the meeting, and the meeting just adjourned. Okay, um, let me see what time it is. Let me see what time it is. It's six fifty-three on Wednesday, July the fourteenth. Uh, the meeting just adjourned, literally just adjourned. Um, I let my friend, uh, Constance Everie know that I was going on live with a podcast right now. So anyway, I hope she listens or views or whatever. Anyway, Mr. Watson says that he had talked with, uh, Gary Dupler in the law director's office because the issue came up, uh, about, um, the fact that he had not brought, uh, this. They called it a substitute motion. Susan Horn, the chair, called it a substitute motion. When, if you go back and watch, and I'll put it on brianhornback.com, if you go back and watch the actual meeting, he offered it as a friendly amendment, not as a substitute motion. Uh, but, um, my friend, Betsy Henderson, and she is my friend, uh, asked him about why he didn't bring it earlier, uh, to the, to the body. Now, you all know, I've talked about the sunshine law, um, and the fact that, you know, they really can't talk amongst each other. Uh, and so he said, you know, he talked to Gary Dupler before the meeting about, you know, when should he bring this to the body? Should he email it out? Should he, um, let them know in advance? And, um, he made reference to the fact that he sent it out quite a, sent it, sent one out quite a bit earlier, and it was met with great hesitation. One note in the trash can. Um, and so, um, he didn't send it earlier, um, because of that. Evady Satterfield, who represents Austin East in the First District of Knoxville, made a comment after, uh, Mr. Watson had made some comments, and she said, "We don't have healing in our community." Throw me a bone, a vote. Throw me a bone, a vote. Evady's been on the board for about two years. I sat down with her, as I did with the, uh, other folks that ran against her a couple of years ago. Uh, she and I actually met at Starbucks on Cumberland Avenue. I met one of her opponents at the, the Panera in Bearden. Um. That dead air is the fact that I'm having to contemplate why Evady Satterfield would have to ask her colleagues for a bone. Think about that. She's an elected representative of of the people of the First District, and she had to ask seven, because there's only eight there tonight, uh, Virginia Bab. And I'm not gonna hold anything against Virginia Bab, okay? I'm not holding nothing against Virginia Bab for being out of town. It might have been a vacation. It might have been work-related. I don't care. I understand. Life goes on. When I was on the board, I missed meetings. I get it. Virginia Bab, you're good with me. If you're watching YouTube, you're getting a thumbs up, a Donald Trump thumbs up, okay? I'm okay with you having missed the meeting tonight, Virginia Bab. It's fine. There's eight members there tonight. Evady Satterfield, who represents the First District, which is, there's nine members of the Knox County School Board. So she had to ask. So think about this. The school board, you got nine members, right? Okay, so take all of Knox County divided amongst nine, amongst nine. And that's what Evady Satterfield represents. She represents a portion, one of the nine of all of Knox County. She had to ask for a bone, and her bone was a vote. She said, "We don't have healing in Anderson, in, in, in my community." Now, before we get too far into this, let me also tell you that Reginald Jackson, a community activist, spoke before the, the discussion amongst the board. Four, one, two, three, four. Austin East High School students spoke. One of them, an upcoming senior, spoke. And, and all of this is about an MOA with the Knoxville Police Department. Okay? And so four students spoke, one being a senior, the last one being a senior. I'll put the link up when it gets posted. I'll put the link up on brianhornback.com. Go back and check it. Evady Satterfield had to ask for a bone, and she explained that that bone was a vote by Kristi Christie, Mike McMillan, Patty Bounds, Betsy Henderson, Susan Horn, Daniel Watson, Jennifer Owen. Kristi Christie went on to say that we are partners as a board. We're partners. What Daniel Watson offered, in what I watched, was a friendly amendment that the expectation, participation with the director of schools to work with other organizations. Um, when he talks about other organizations, he's talking about the Knox County Sheriff's Department and the KPD. What Daniel Watson wanted in, in what I believe to be, to have been a friendly amendment that Susan Horn, the chair, said was a, uh, man, we're already eight minutes, almost nine minutes in. Um, what Susan Horn declared to be a substitute amendment, what I believe Daniel Watson said was a friendly amendment, um, was that the superintendent of schools would work with the Knox County Sheriff's Department, the Knox County Police Department, to come up with one, not two, MOAs on how the two agencies would work within the Knox County school system. When Jennifer Owen started making some pretty good points, Mike McMillan, Mike McMillan called for the question. Hmm. How did that call for the question go? Four-four? Actually, the call for the question, I think, went five-three, I think. So how did, um, yeah, five-three. Um, I don't remember. The call for the question passed. So it was more than, it was five or more. So then, how did the nine be what I believe to have been a friendly amendment, but Susan Horn declared to be a substitute motion? How did that pass? That passed with a four-four vote. Kristi Christie voted with Satterfield, Owen, Watson, and Christie. It's four. Uh, the other four were Henderson, Bounds, McMillan, Horn. It was four-four. You gotta have five votes to pass anything. So it was four-four, so it didn't pass. That was the, that was the motion to, um, that was the motion that Wat- Watson was calling for, which was that within twelve months, the director of schools would meet with the Knox County Sheriff, which will be Tom Spangler, uh, Knoxville, City of Knoxville, and the No- and the KPD, come up with one MOA, because now, provided all this passes, they'll have two MOAs. They'll have an MOA for the Sheriff's Department and MOA for the Knoxville Police Department. So after that motion failed by a four-four, Kristi Christie and Betsy Henderson, um, made a motion for the original motion, which was to rubber stamp what Mayor Kincaid and Bob Thomas had come up with, and Mr. Watson passed. As you can tell, I'm old school. I still take notes. Um, so during that discussion, Evady Satterfield asked Bob Thomas, "Are you, Bob Thomas, clear on what you are to do?" Let me repeat that. Evady Satterfield, who represents the First District, asked Director of Schools Bob Thomas, "Are you clear on what you are to do?" Thomas said, "I don't know what to do." Satterfield passed. Before Susan Horn could announce the vote, the vote was five in favor, one in opposition, and two passes. The two passes were Satterfield and Watson. The no was McMillan. Before Susan Horn, the chair, could ask, before the chair could, uh, announce what the vote was. And let's, let's think, okay? If Susan Horn had been quick on her feet, she would have declared the vote to be five in favor, one in opposition, and two pass. That's eight, alright? She's not that quick. So before Susan Horn could announce the vote, five in support, one in opposition, two pass. McMillan asked, "What'd we vote on?" McMillan asked, "What'd we vote on?" Many, many laughs. Uh, now, remember, I'm watching from the comfort of my office. I'm watching from the comfort of my office, because I work ten hours a day. Well, I'm, I'm gone eleven hours a day from my home office. Um, I'm gone from my office eleven hours a day. Um, so I watch this at, at the comfort of my computer. Um. So McMillan asked, "What did we pass?" Daniel Watson, huh, might get, he might get the award of the night, but there's several awards that need to be given out tonight. But, um, he said, "You know, several of us, like Mr. McMillan, mm, we were confused earlier tonight, so, um." Anyway, Susan Horn explained to him that they were talk, they were talking about the, the original, the original nine-B resolution that KPD and Mayor Kincaid had given to the Knox County School Board, that, to be honest with you, I think Superintendent Thomas thought was gonna be rubber stamped. So McMillan, before the announcement could be made, changed his vote to yes. So it passed six yes, zero no, and two passes. Alright, that's the MOA with the Knoxville Police Department for school security for this coming year. Superintendent Thomas has no clear direction on whether we just move on with two MOAs, one with the Sheriff's Department, one with the Police Department, or what we do. But if the, we're sixteen minutes in, so hey, I'm, I'm gonna be right on my time here. So if that wasn't enough dramatics and enough for me to laugh about and me to get mad about, let me tell you about another one. Another item on the agenda was whether the, uh, they should approve the MOA for the Knox County Health Department Director Martha Buchanan to be the heir apparent or the health director to instruct the teacher, uh, instruct the nurses in the Knox County school system on how they should operate. There were three or four people, three, I believe, four maybe, that spoke to this on public forum. Public forum is at the beginning of the meeting, not at the time of the issue. Kevin Hill, Sherry Garrett, and Vern Henry, I believe was his name. I know Kevin Henry, and I know Kevin Hill, and I know Sherry Garrett really well. Um, they spoke. Sherry Garrett, by the way, is a, is a nurse of thirty-plus years. I know them well. They were asking that it be postponed because the Health Department, because of those nine-hundred doses that got thrown away or disposed of or lost. Still under investigation, still under investigation. They asked that it be delayed. They didn't ask for thirty days or sixty days or nine, they just asked it be delayed. So the MOA for the Health Director to become the, the Director of Medical for the Knox County Schools, Daniel Watson made a motion, and guess what? Susan Horn made the motion that it died for lack of a second. Now granted, there was a delay. I'll give Susan Horn that. There was a delay. Jennifer Owen then made a motion that was, I believe, seconded by Watson to reconsider the previous question. Some people in the audience said, "That's not fair." Uh, Patty Bounds asked for clarification. I texted Patty Bounds and explained to her that until the gavel, Robert's Rules of Order, for those of you that don't know, Robert's Rules of Order declare that until a meeting is gavelled to conclusion, one can make a motion to reconsider a previous motion, provided you're on the prevailing side. Jennifer Owen was right to ask for a reconsideration. Daniel Watson was right to ask for a reconsideration, because no one was on the prevailing side. No one was on the prevailing side, because there was never a vote. So Jennifer Owen, Daniel Watson made a motion to reconsider. There was a lot of, um, confusion. I'm not even sure that Gary Dupler knew what the hell was going on. But anyway, the roll call on the reconsideration was that Satterfield voted yes to reconsider. Jennifer Owen voted yes to reconsider. Daniel Watson voted yes to reconsider. And then the following people voted no to reconsider. Kristi Christie from South Knoxville, Patty Bounds from Powell and Halls, Mike McMillan from East Knox County, uh, Susan Horn from Southwest Knox County, and Betsy Henderson from, from Harden Valley and Cards. So guess what? It died. So guess what? Martha Buchanan? It appears that because it, it died for a lack of a second, and it appears that because it did not be, that, because it was not brought back for reconsideration, your MOA to be the medical director over in Knox County Schools is dead. So those folks have been fighting the battle for a lot of ye- for a lot of months last year about the mask. They gotta win tonight. They gotta win tonight. They gotta win tonight against Martha Buchanan and the Knox County Health Department. They gotta win tonight. Anyway. Look, those of you that have been following brianhornback.com since two thousand and four, and this is two thousand and twenty-one, turn off the bright light on the YouTube. It's time to turn the lights out, boys and girls, ladies, gentlemen. Um. I'm passionate about what I believe in, but you know what? After it's over, it's over. So KPD, uh, is back in the Knox County Schools on their terms. If you'll go back and watch the meeting, and I'll post, probably can't get it posted until tomorrow, uh, because it takes the schools a little while to get it uploaded. Um, I might be able to get it uploaded tonight. We'll see. Depends on how long I stay up tonight. Um, but if you go back and watch the meeting, you'll see that, um, that's KPD got, in the discussion of what Mike McMillan asked the superintendent of schools, um, the, the city mayor, Indy Kincaid, who I don't have a beef with, contrary to a lot of my Republican friends, um, she and, uh, KPD, uh, Chief Eve Thomas, they got what they wanted. Uh, apparently, schools really didn't ask for much, if, if you go back and watch what McMillan was asking Thomas tonight. Um, so that's done. Um. So there's really no reason for Bob Thomas to go back and talk to the Sheriff's Department about revisiting, um, the MOA. There's no reason for Bob Thomas to go back to KPD and ask for revision of MOA. Um, so the MOA is the MOA for the next year. Uh, if, if, if you're paying attention, um, a year is, uh, today, July the fourteenth, so a year would be July fourteenth of next year. So about, I mean, you know, May or June, they might just start talking about this MOA again. But then again, you know, by May or June of, uh, twenty-twenty-two, we're gonna have the, uh, countywide election in May of twenty-twenty-two. Uh, it'll take us several weeks to get past that, and then into June, people are gonna be going on vacation. And then we just need to pass a renewal of the KPD agreement. Now, whether or not, here's the big question. Here's a big question. I'll leave you. This, this is gonna be a pretty long one, because I've already gone twenty-four minutes. Here's the big question. If you go back and watch the workshops in May and June of the school board, and you watch tonight's meeting, you'll hear some contradictory stories. You'll hear some stories about, "We're elected by our people to make the vo- the, to make the votes that we need to make." Tonight, you'll hear, uh, so if you heard that like two weeks ago, four weeks ago, that's what you'll hear. What you hear tonight is, "We'll have public meetings. We'll talk to our peo- we'll talk to, we'll talk to our leaders. We'll talk to our leaders." I can tell you one board member that won't talk to a constituent in her district who's served in the very position that she's serving in, and that being the, the district that she represents. But then again, I won't. But I can guarantee you that if my phone rings, it'll be from eight of the nine school board members, who I have a decent relationship with. That might all end tonight after they watch this twenty-six, twenty-seven minute podcast. But I know one board member that won't sit down and meet with me. Alright, thank y'all for listening to Brian Hornback Podcast. Um, again, brianhornback.com, that's your go-to source. Check me out on Facebook. It's, um, brianhornback.com on Facebook. It's, um, mega underscore bullhorn on Twitter. It's, uh, Brian Hornback on Facebook. It's Brian R. Hornback on Facebook. Uh, if you wanna know everything about what's going on, brianhornback.com, you need to go to brianhornback.com. Spell it out. D-O-T-C-O-M. Brian Hornback. B-R-I-A-N-H-O-R-N-B-A-C-K-D-O-T-C-O-M. Facebook dot com slash B-R-I-A-N-H-O-R-N-B-A-C-K-D-O-T-C-O-M. That will, if you follow that, if you like that page, and even if you don't like that page, if you'll follow that page, you will find that you'll get every notice of every post that ever gets posted on brianhornback.com. And that's fantastic. If you'll go to twitter dot com slash mega, M-E-G-A underscore bullhorn, B-U-L-L-H-O-R-N. Again, you follow Mega Bullhorn, you're gonna get every story that gets posted on brianhornback.com. So you really don't have to worry about going to brianhornback.com on a regular basis. You just follow those two places, and you'll be golden. If you wanna reach to me, you can email me at Brian, B-R-I-A-N, at brianhornback.com. Email me. Let me know what you're thinking. Let me know where I'm wrong. I get a lot of that. Let me know where I'm right. I don't get a lot of that. And, um, and let me know from you. Um, we got some folks that like to, that, um, that have been friends at brianhornback.com for a number of years. I thank them for that. Uh, Interagency Insurance, been in business since nineteen sixty-six. Lou Moran III runs that business today. They can write any insurance for you in about thirty-seven or forty states. Julia Hurley Group, uh, Real Estate, they can, uh, buy or, they can help you buy or sell your real estate anywhere in East Tennessee and beyond. Uh, and Matlock Tire Service and Auto Repair, uh, they got five locations, Little North City, uh, Maryville, Athens, the new one in Harden Valley, and my golden child, the one in Faragut, uh, right there near Lovel Road and Kingston Pike. I was going to, let me just say something real quick about Matlock Tire and Auto Repair. I was going to Matlock Tire and Auto Repair. When I first moved to Southwest Knox County, we moved to Concord in nineteen ninety-two. We moved, uh, actually closed on our house December the fifteenth of nineteen ninety-two. Matlock Tire was at the corner of Lovel Road and Kingston Pike, right there where Walgreens is. Uh, obviously, when, uh, Walgreens wanted to locate there, um, I guess they bought the property. I've never asked Jimmy about that. I guess I could. Um, but they moved a little bit west because they needed a bigger location, and so they moved a little bit west on the other side of the road. Um, and so, uh, Matlock Tire and Auto Repair, uh, it's a family business. Uh, Jimmy, uh, took it over from his father, who passed away at an, an early age. Uh, Jimmy has been running it for a number of years. Joe's, uh, involved in it. Reagan's, I think, gonna be involved in it. Uh, just great folks. Uh, you need an oil change, you need a set of tires, Matlock Tire Service and Auto Repair. So you need to go to, um, on, uh, Interagency Insurance. On uh, Interagency Insurance for all your business, personal insurance. Lou Moran the third, so you need to call. And um, man. I think I've gone beyond thirty minutes. Thank y'all.